The city council of West Liberty in order and for roll call, we are joined by council member Martinez who will be back very shortly, council member Schultz is here. City, or I mean Mayor Protem McFerrin, council member Parizic, council member Dominguez. So is there an approval or someone willing to move to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, the ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Next on our list is that we are joined by the new city attorney for West Liberty, someone that I've had an opportunity to work with over the past few months here. Amy Reasoner is now our city attorney, so please welcome her to. Anything that you'd like to say?
Sure, just a brief introduction, I'm with Lynch Dallas Law Firm in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. We primarily represent cities and counties as well as their insurance and risk pool carriers. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to work with you. We have eight attorneys that do this type of work and we have a brand new lawyer who's going to be taking the bar exam and joining us will be number nine in August. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here and I look forward to working with all of them.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve it?
Motion, second.
And it has been moved and seconded is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved, the council minutes of May twenty first are in the packet and also we have received the city clerks treasures report as well, so are there any questions or concerns regarding either of these items? Hearing none, we will move on then, item five, severe and liquor license. We have a request for a twelve month class E retail alcohol license for Casey's General Store, number two eight nine zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just curious with the police chief. How's there, has there been any issues?
No. Is there any further discussion? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, fixed up our reports from the employees, city manager, city attorney, city boards and commission. So we have, we don't have city engineer Leo Foley here that's on our list, so we'll move to if there's any further information from the city manager on her report.
Mr. Mayor, I was able to get the report, it's in front of all of you. Within my report, we'd also include work with Leo Foley with Beaster and Kim and the rest of the staff for what's been going on with the projects. So when you have an opportunity to review and then if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Did Mr. Foley communicate with you that he was unable to make it?
We were communicating right up until the meeting and it was my understanding that he was gonna be here, so.
Okay.
Did you know that we're gonna be at the library?
He's had the agenda. Yes.
Police report is in your packet and shows an increase in the number of calls that have been received by the police department compared to a year ago this time. I think that's an indication of the relationship that we have with community policing. Are there any other questions for the chief regarding the police report?
I like the photos you shared.
Yes.
A lot of good, you know, being out there in the community.
I would like to commend Officer Staley for her time with us, I've heard many good things about her on the street. I appreciate that. Sad to see her go. See her on the roster still.
Yeah, I'm sad to see her go as well.
I am also curious on the our meeting for the SRO, is that freaking place or is that? Excellent, I'm looking forward to that, so.
Also the streets report is in the package as well, are there questions about it?
Kudos to all the street solid waste, all the staff, especially for this last month in regarding the storm damage we had and the hauling and the the cutting away all the branches, so. Very appreciative.
That was the city as a whole, not just one or two departments, that was.
Very appreciative.
I know it's not my report week, but I would like to note that in regards to helping with storms, the library we have forms printed out upstairs, both in Spanish and English for the emergency assistance, so that if anybody wants to apply for one of those grants.
Excuse me, Ally, I apologize. Could I, um, there's another conversation going on, it's very difficult to hear, I apologize.
So yeah, we have the grant, the Iowa disaster relief grants available upstairs for people to apply for. We have them in Spanish and English and my staff has been trained on how to walk people through that. So if you encounter anybody in the community who is, I think it's two hundred percent of the poverty level, let them know they can come in and it's easy, the chart is on the form that you can check really easy just by a first glance, to see if it's something that you should pursue. It sounds like we didn't get the FEMA for the federal declaration.
We're still working on it.
Okay.
For the minutes.
But we would be able to help them with that as well.
We do have the state money at this point, and so those are the forms that are available.
FEMA's website does say that even if you haven't, if your area has not been declared, that you can still fill out the form so that it's in the list once they, if they do declare it.
So it will add to the damage and just to speak to that in our report, Adam and Co. have been working with me and we've been working through the numbers and then after this payroll period, we'll have a set of hours and additional cleanup costs and the equipment costs. I just wanted to, also within the report, Adam provided an estimate of how many, how many loads have now went to?
We were thinking about a hundred and forty dump truck loads already hauled out.
A hundred and forty loads so far and counting.
Yeah.
And plenty of mulch that's available.
Yeah, that recycling center, free take. Take it all. Eleven thirty six.
So with that said, communications will be working on. So with our supervisors meeting, we identified to work on some communications to report back to the community, you know, what it takes when you have severe weather come through your community and the undertaking of, you know, cleaning up debris, clearing streets and then also continuing to provide, you know, our daily services and tasks on top of that additional work, so. So they'll be working together to give our community members, you know, a view of what it is when, when we have these events occur.
I was looking at the county for something else, and Muscatine County was on the list. I don't know if that includes all of us, but it was.
It wasn't when we declared, so.
On the FEMA website.
Oh.
I, I just, this last week we've continued to send over numbers. I do know as of the end of the last week, we had a report that it might have come up a little bit, but I know working with Chris Jasper and other members in the county that we continue to keep getting reports on the damages and so that may have been now just put us where we needed to be for the FEMA. I just haven't got the official notice from them.
So, so I just want to clarify, so I have this correct. The FEMA money that's available is for the homeowner that suffers. Is that, it's for the?
The state money is for the home.
Homeowners, correct, the homeowners in the event of, but.
And I believe that there is a similar program offered at the federal level once we are declared a federal disaster zone.
Or, but I'm talking, that's for, for homeowners.
But we haven't received that official declaration and until we receive that, I don't want to speak to what it.
You're questioning about commercial.
I'm questioning about the municipality.
I, I don't have the official declaration.
And that's what we are waiting on.
Yeah, once we have the official declaration that identifies what funding is available, then I'll be able to identify with council room on the community of what that, and life what came through with the state. They'll provide us some links and they'll provide us that information to follow those steps as well, so.
Let's go back to city engineer.
So a couple of, one thing that I just caught today was the wastewater treatment plan. So the last thing we did is we provided a, in our preliminary design, a memo that basically broke the first phase into two stages. Kind of splitting up the cost because of some of the things going on with Western Liberty Foods. We haven't presented that to Western Liberty Foods yet, but another thing they were looking at is Western Liberty Foods in the past have really pushed because of limits, trying to get their limits higher. Well, one thing we have figured out during preliminary design is we think that there is potential without doing much to give them higher limits. But they're gonna ask to do some more sampling, taking samples so we can prove to DNR. But that's something, we're not going forward with that or anything like that, just letting you know that that's up there, but if we can do that, potentially that will make so our, our improvements could be less cost in the long run. So that's something we just need to, need to go through.
Cause you were supposed to meet with them.
We have not met with them yet, though.
Yet.
Right.
In order to discuss how.
That's a brand new information that I have of just today that, that the modeling we've been doing is showing that we think we can prove to DNR that they can have higher limits almost without doing any. We still have to do a project to replace all the old equipment and some of that, but. So that's something that we wanted to talk to the city as well as Western Liberty Foods, and I think we can do it in one meeting, cut them right up.
And Mayor Protem, I can also add to, so the city's been meeting with Western Liberty Foods. Primarily it's been, we create superintendent wastewater treatment and I've been meeting with them. They had been having some difficulties with sampling and so for our last meeting, they were able to identify and finally get a process that's working because their samples were either not coming out correctly or they were throwing off wrong readings, so. So just as a week or so ago, they were able to get that. So now that they're able to get that sampling correct, I think then that'll put us in a good position to have that meeting with that data that's gonna be able to come through on that.
Second issue, I think. Yeah, okay, second one is on Rainbow and Rainbow Street. We, we went out and we did a final walkthrough and found some cracked concrete that they need to repair, they still haven't done that. But they have done a lot of the cleanup and a lot of the making the rock look a lot better around our outlets and around the drainage well, so. That looks really good and I think that's coming right around. The second part of that is Columbus Street and Lee and Adam have been working with the owners on getting some easements and I think we're very close now to getting those easements. The contract Rainbow already has the Columbus Street sidewalk in there. So if we can get those two easements, I think we can go forward on that, so that's, that's again some good news. Well, number two, I, I heard from Northway that Jetco is your integrator that does work with Danny at the plant. So they are now ready to start to integrate into the well number two, which is basically ready and up and running, so that's again stuff that should be done in the next couple of weeks. And then hopefully the next meeting I can come to you that would be worked through. And then BIC sub-division, they had a walkthrough on Friday, I missed the walkthrough on Friday. But it sounds like things went really well, there was a hydrant, they've been having a hard time pressure testing the water. And what they found out is they had a defective hydrant, so they haven't replaced part of the hydrant that was defective, but that's what they're about to do and then they'll have to re-pressure test. We also have all the sanitary and storm televised. We haven't looked through it all yet, we've just been getting that and then it looked like majority of that, we were gonna, my, my, my guy was gonna go out and walk the streets really close again to see if there's any cracking or anything like that, but things looked pretty good to get in that. I just drove by it now too and it looks like they cleaned it up a lot last couple of days.
We had a meeting on, of the property on Columbus Street this past week, where are we at? You said you think this is moving forward.
Getting closer, that's for sure, yes, Lee and I and Adam kind of, Lee, Lee and Adam met with the property owner and they came up with kind of a compromise, so we're gonna put that in writing back to them tomorrow and I guess I think they should agree to it, Adam thinks they should agree to it, but it's not agreed to yet. Pretty close.
Any questions for the city engineer? The further questions?
Oh. Well, later on.
All right. We will move on, I believe, I may have lost my place, oh, vendor claims. We have two of them, first is vendor claim. List number one, for the mere amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Um, for me, I, when I notice one of the vendors, I, I usually would deny or say no, so.
So you want to abstain from the vote, is that?
Well, I'll just say no, if you want me to abstain.
No.
It's not really conflict for me.
Yeah.
I just don't agree with that vendor and I know it's not the city's fault, it's the system's fault, so. Yeah, I just wanted to explain why I always say no. Yes.
All right, is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
The motion has approved, the second one is the library prepaid claims of the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and it is approved, next is the time for public comments and or correspondence. So first off, we have called for any public comments from the group that is here, we'd like for you to state your name and address and keep your comments to two minutes. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to city council members' public comments or correspondence and we will start with council member Martinez.
I don't have any, I just want to say, it's something I do want to say about everybody's hard work and after this. We're very secret, come together, not just employees, but as a council. I'm very pleased with that.
Council member Schultz.
Yes, I received some communication from a resident on their street. They were impacted by one of our earlier storms with some flooding. They were just kind of checking in, looking for any updates. I did touch base with city manager Gertz who has been working with them on that and I believe she has contacted them back and we're continuing to work through that and more to come here in the future. I've also received some questions concerning some of the multiple trees that have been taken down, wondering if they're gonna be replaced, if maybe what they need to do to possibly see that they get replaced. And yeah.
Let me make a note of that because we, since it's not on the agenda, we shouldn't be discussing. Okay, council member Dominguez.
Um, let's see, I know we got a question about the pool. I don't know if that was answered or not, if it was, I don't need to say anything, but just wondering about the, the fees. I think there's a conflict posted on the website and what they were told when they went to go to the pool and the hours of the pool, I think was the question, so. There's an email. Somebody should answer if it hasn't already.
Great, awesome.
Other thing, let's see. I did have one other thing that I, it slipped my mind, so it's not been that important.
Signal and we can come back to it, council member Parizic.
I haven't received any reason, so no, I don't have it.
Okay. And Mayor Protem?
Uh, just the same email regards to the pool. I had received the same thing and I believe city manager Gertz has addressed that or communicated to them, yeah, just as long as we have a clear understanding out in the public or press release or, or website of pool hours and costs, that's main thing.
So we handle the communication and the update information's been sent to communications.
Okay.
And we'll have a further discussion to address the confusion and the clarification, so we do a better job.
And then I did receive an email from a major with the United States Air Force. She is headquartered or stationed in Sioux Falls, South Dakota in regards to how we got linked with the upwards and the DOD regarding the childcare. And so I just replied back to her and copied Lee in on it so that, because you have all of the contacts and then you can direct her however. So, yeah, I thought that was pretty cool that, you know, people are reaching out to us, so we, like we had said earlier, we are setting a trend and this is by far not the first time we've set a trend, so I like that.
I do remember what I.
Good, I'll go back to you.
So on Sunday, we had a party for my niece, she turned five, her birthday's in the air. But the water wasn't working at the shelters and my sister had, you know, rented a shelter. I texted the Parks and Rec director, even though it was Sunday, just on a fly and he texted me right back, which I really appreciated, and said that the water was shut off at all the pumps because they're working on that water leak, so I don't know if it's been re, reinstalled or re, I don't know, turned on, but just wanted to say that they might be off if you go to the park and it's not working, but they're aware of it.
We'll move then to reports from the city manager and any comments or correspondence.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, my correspondence is in line with council's correspondence.
All right, and city clerk?
I do not, I'm going to get this time.
Okay. We'll move on then to item nine, new business. A discussion appropriate action of the city council on receiving and filing the Muscatine housing study that was presented by really, we lead director Ken Brooks. So that was done earlier today. So process here is first discussion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move to a motion, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the clerk will call the roll.
That one is just.
Oh, it's a consent, I'm sorry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it is approved, then we go to resolution twenty twenty four zero six zero four hyphen one five four to accept and approve the bid on sale of the twenty twenty seventy-two inch club cadet mower from Parks and Rec, you saw in the report, I think we're selling that for three hundred and ten bucks or so, so. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
All right, Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Parizic?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passed despite several.
Okay, C, resolution twenty twenty four zero four zero five hyphen one five five. This is a resolution to approve and accept amendment number one to the equipment health and maintenance management service agreement between Solar Turbines Incorporated and the city of West Liberty. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're now to a point of discussion and I think that.
I would like to get Mr. Franklin to go over this.
Yeah, so essentially what you guys are looking at here is this is our service agreement with our, with our, our turbine manufacturer. They, they give us a few service days every year, along with being on call for when we do have to run and start our engines, they are, they can be available for us in case we need them. Under this agreement, there's also that they give us, they supply us with our consumables, which are a lot of fuel filters, a lot of air filters and just consumable parts that we use on a yearly basis. I'd like to point out that the annual cost for this was at eighty thousand dollars annually. With, with a lot of hard work between John, me, myself and city manager Lee Gertz, we've, we've managed to negotiate this down to sixty thousand dollars annually, so. Their first proposal when they came to us was at ninety-six thousand dollars annually. So over a, over a five-year base term contract, that's a savings of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the city.
And this is outside of like the diesel which we arrange, correct? When, when we need to generate, do we order the, then we order the diesel, city does on our own, okay?
Yep, this is, this is the service contract for, for maintenance.
Maintenance.
To be done, yeah.
And if we have to generate there and there's an issue, are they just a stones throw away or do we have to?
Essentially, yes, yeah, they, within this agreement, they have to have a response time of at least forty-eight hours.
Oh.
So they can be, they will be on site. Or we can, we can hold them accountable at that point.
Okay.
Um, we did get this, we did get this, we lowered the base term on this a little, a little bit. We went with a three-year base term with an option for two years extension upon mutual agreement, which was another win on the city's part, I believe.
At the same rate?
Yes, yeah, at that sixty thousand, at that sixty thousand annual. This does come with a two percent price escalation every year, which is very common with these kind of agreements. But that's still, even with the last proposal, their first proposal with us, that two percent, that two and a half percent price and price escalation was attached to that ninety-six thousand dollars annual as well, so.
So in the future, do you foresee us continuing this beyond five years, like we're talking? Seven to ten to fifteen years, having to go through?
Yeah, um, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see my staff start taking this, taking this over a little bit more. There's been a couple of people, a couple of guys in the department that have shown some interest in maybe getting some education on the turbines and taking the lead on a lot of these preventative maintenance that we, that we get done. I will say that these turbines are, are very complicated machines and someone very educated needs to be working on them. There's a lot of lockout, tagout procedures, safety procedures that need to be in place, you know, and before you start messing around with them, but with, with some education and some training, I think that hopefully by the end of this, this contractual agreement, this lifetime of this, this agreement, hopefully we can have something in place. hopefully by the end of this, this contractual agreement, this lifetime of this, this agreement, hopefully we can have something in place. I would, uh, I would recommend approval on this, it's a very good agreement.
Is there, uh, further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Alright, Dominguez?
Yeah.
Friesick?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Next up is resolution, uh, twenty twenty four zero six zero four hyphen one five six. Uh, a resolution to accept change order for the electric, uh, re-roofing project in the city of West Liberty. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there, uh, discussion?
Yes, um, thirty one thousand dollars is a big ask. And, um, I just wanna know why this wasn't factored in early on.
I, I, you asked me that last time, and I kinda told you that I wasn't really involved with the design and plans on this one. That was done by BHMG, I was brought in after the plans were done and the contractor was selected.
But the, but this is a building issue, not the electrical engineering issue. So I mean, from the building, could contracting part, you, you, I mean, that falls within your purview as far as the structure.
Yeah, but we work, we work for you based on contract by contract, on which, whatever you guys decide, or we ask, and we decide to have us work on. On that one, they decided BHMG would do the design. I don't really know why.
I can answer to that. Um, Mayor Protem, I, um, I, I wanna be fair to, you know, fully on this. Um, but also I have to be very careful of any statements made too as to why we went with BHMG. And at that time, it, it very much had to do with, um, the management of the department. And I'll be good at that.
I, I did send some pictures today. I do think that all of the changes, I've looked at them pretty closely. I know, um, the electrical superintendent has also looked at them, so the, for instance, the panel replacement. What my inspector told me is that they, and a lot of those panels, they couldn't even nail through them and have it hold. So they almost had to replace on the lower roof. And the lower roof was done and it was approved by the acting superintendent at the time. The pitch pockets, I'd never heard that term before, but I did send you pictures too. All of the, the parapet wall is held up by a bunch of angles that go down through the roof and are anchored. These pitch packets go around the metal that goes down through the roof and keeps it from leaking. So they tell me that they had talked to whoever at the time they were looking at bidding this and said they might need these pitch pockets, they might not, and they wouldn't know till they tore the roof off. When they tore it off, they decided they needed them. It was in the contract at what the cost was, so the cost for them was three hundred and ten dollars per. So it wasn't like it was brand new to us, it was new to me, but not brand new to, to them. And then the, the upper roof, the west upper roof is one where, again, they had a number in the contract for how much per unit cost, about thirteen dollars and fifty cents. We, meaning V and K and the contractor, the attachment I showed you was a sketch they put together of what, when they started tearing off. And then they, once they told, started tearing it off, then they would go down below and say, okay, if it looks like this, then we're probably gonna have to replace it. And they made an estimate, and this, that's so Cody, this came out to about a thousand square feet. But I did not want to be over a thousand, so this is a, we will measure that when it gets done. It's not done yet on the last item there, and we will measure it, and hopefully, and what Cody told me today, it looks like it will be less than thirteen hundred. But I wouldn't gather it would be too much less than a thousand, so it's gonna be in that number probably between a thousand and fifteen.
And there will be no remediation for this, is that correct? Asbestos?
Oh, no, the, the, we did do this asbestos testing, and it tested clear.
Okay.
So there is no need for that, because that would have been a.
Cause I know we had talked about that earlier.
Nerve wracking, very nerve wracking. Cause again, I didn't know what the material was, I was banking on what. And again, DC Taylor seems like a, especially the superintendent, seems like a straight up, pretty good contractor, that's what we've heard. And he acted like he had seen this many times before. I had not, when I brought it to the lab, though, they had not seen it either. And they have a test they can do to test for the type of material it was, and they couldn't, it didn't test. They couldn't make a, a decision, determination what it was. So then they had to send it straight out and get it tested for a spec basis and happily tested clear. So I know this is a big ask, I'm not sitting here for a minute saying it's not, and I know, um, I wish we would have had this ahead of time. But I do think that we're doing a good service for the city. I do think this roof has been leaking forever, from what I understand. And I think when they're done, we're gonna have a good roof on that building, and I think that's really important with all of the, all of the money that's inside of that building, I think having it with a good roof is very important. Is there further, oh, excuse, I recommend approving, is there further discussion?
And this is approving for?
Are we?
Hold on, just to make sure, because if you guys read your actual, um, resolution for the change order, it has information that city manager Gertz and, um, electric superintendent Franklin can go over with you.
So with, so within this, um, oh, go ahead and take it.
Yeah, so there, the, the east wall, uh, the pair, the east wall of the lower garage, um, we've had, with the east driving rain, we've been having, uh, water penetration through that, through that wall. That's been, that's been coming down, even though that, that section has been re-roofed.
Okay.
Um, there's been a couple options that have been thrown out there. We thought about covering the whole wall with membrane. Um, is that in the packet as well, that estimate?
No, it wasn't.
No.
That would never put forward.
No, that's, that was, it was too much money and really not a great option. Um, they put another, um, estimate forward on, uh, encapsulating that wall in steel, which came back at, uh, the cost of like twenty five thousand five hundred. Um, and, uh, that was too much at that point as well. We did not, we didn't wanna spend that extra cost. Uh, but we still had to do something about that. Uh, we reached out to Morrison, and, um, he gave us, he gave us an estimate that should be in your packet there, at a cost of, uh, eighty one fifty. So.
Yes.
So then we need another substantial savings.
So.
And, and going locally.
Yes.
So to, um, Madam Mayor Protem and Madam Mayor and Council to further clarify, I just wanna make sure, so we're not going to proceed forward with the, with the change order with DC Taylor's cost of thirty one one seventy five. Our recommendation is to proceed forward with the eight thousand one hundred and fifty estimate received from, um, KWM.
So, so that would have been change order two. What you have in front of you is change order one. We would have put change order two with the wall encapsulation or whatever we did with the wall, so you haven't seen anything from DC Taylor. I have, Cody has, but you guys have not seen anything. It was quite a bit like he said substantially higher, and we were not, we weren't pleased with those.
So what we would be voting to approve is the eighty one hundred that Morrison proposed.
Plus the thirty one one seventy five of the change order round.
Yeah, we'll call that change order one, this could be change order two, for the encapsulation of the east wall.
So we didn't have, we, we don't have the change on here, we just have, which, uh, change order one. Uh, it says order number one for the re-roofing project, that's all I have on here. Um, we don't have number two.
Right.
Change order number two.
Correct, because from the understanding, from when I worked with city manager Gertz, it was communicated that we were taking this in place of the original change order that he had, but now with the communication from both of them, it looks like it's two different items. So we wouldn't be able to approve or pass anything tonight based on the resolution you have in front of you.
Oh, so we can't even do the.
We can't add to change order one? I think that it's that emotion represented, I mean.
So we've got a motion on it, so we have to, we have to vote on that.
Yes, so is there, um, further discussion?
Yes.
We need to vote this down so that we can bring back the new one later.
Could you change, could you, could you approve this one and then bring the next one back next, as a second?
So these are, the way that this resolution is written, it is turning down the thirty one one seventy five and it's putting it in place the eighty one fifty.
Yep.
And you want both of those?
Cause I didn't, I, I did not, I'm seemingly going to take accountability for not having a clear understanding of, um, what was occurring with the change orders.
The numbers are somewhat similar, should, now that I look at it, the thirty one one seventy five is similar to. So we'll take it back next time.
So, I mean. Well, I mean, my recommendation is, is we can, we can stay with this being, the KWM is a change order number one. And we can go forward because we're recommending the approval of that change order within our project. And then we bring, then we bring back the thirty one one seventy five as change order number two on June eighteenth. So at least you have, but again, council preference is to what you would like to proceed with.
So you're recommending that we approve something that we're not paying?
Well, I would recommend.
Have our attorney to verify.
I think we can go down that table.
I would not, based on how it's written, I wouldn't approve it that way, because you're essentially turning down that item and putting something else in place.
I concur.
So would you first?
Yeah.
Okay, so the clerk will call the roll.
Alright, McFerrin?
No.
Friesick?
No.
Dominguez?
No.
Martinez?
No.
And then Schultz?
No.
Alright, motion fails zero five.
Okay, alright, so we have a, uh, recommended, uh, public hearing, uh, on, uh, the mowing ordinance up for June eighteenth at seven thirty PM. It's, uh, any, uh, concerns about that date?
Do we need to, Mary, do we need to motion to table this first?
That one failed, but I will bring another one back.
Oh, got it, okay, I'm sorry. You're okay. Confused.
Alright. So there doesn't appear to be problems with the public hearing on updating the mowing ordinance. Uh, next up is, um, on the same date, now we would have a public hearing on updates, uh, the solid waste ordinance.
And I just wanna clarify that these items, I'm working with the, um, potifier right now. So I'm in hopes that we will be able to meet all the deadlines and stuff. I just wanna get it out there so that we have the ability to.
Okay.
Okay, dear, um, excuse me, go ahead. Okay, um, so then the next one is, uh, performance evaluation for the city manager and the city clerk, and those need to be done this month. What's the process? Does the personnel committee meet first, or is it something done by the entire council?
Mr. Mayor and Council, what would you, what would your preference for the process be? You, you can set, uh.
It's already, um, June fourth, and I just, uh, FYI, um, the last two weeks of June, I will be unavailable. Yes.
And the personnel committee.
Yeah, from the sixteenth of June, I will be unavailable until the thirtieth.
Essentially, this is just, I mean, the goal would be, because based on our performance, um, evaluation, uh, policy we have in place, um, at least this sets it on your radar, so you know it's there and, um.
We either meet within the next week or two, or we go to July.
Given that we, uh, need to do this in June, and, um, people are going to be gone, my recommendation would be that we have the personnel committee meet, uh, and give a recommendation to the entire council.
I think that's a good idea.
Not hearing any objections to that.
Do we set a date now, or do we?
We'll contact by email.
Okay, true, that's fine.
Item ten on the agenda is a closed session, enter into a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty one point five parentheses C in parentheses, to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, uh, where its disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in, in that litigation. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? The clerk will call the roll.
Great, Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Friesick?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
So we will excuse the folks and go into closed session.
We are, yes.
So the council has just completed a closed session. Based on the discussion that occurred in, during the closed session, uh, is there a motion? Before the council. The council has just completed a closed session, is there a motion, uh, based on the discussion of the closed session? The council has just completed a closed session, is there a motion based on the discussion of the closed session? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved, is it second? Uh, all those, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that are opposed, nay. The ayes have it, council meeting here's adjourned.